We'd like to welcome all to the March 11th Call the order, Ms. Creighton.
Here.
Ms. Lucio, I think. Family issue, Ms. Foley.
Here.
Ms. Olmey.
Here.
Ms. Filbrick.
Here.
And Ms. Tenny.
Here.
We have a forum tonight. I'd like to remind everyone and guests to be recognized by the chair if you wish to speak. This meeting is going to be recorded. Time of the acknowledgement, we see the correspondence, Town of Essex. ZB8 on 2/27, Ixiloni on 2/28, Chief Fitzgerald on 2/28. More about that later. If we have a full agenda tonight, I'd like to move the public comment item to the end of the meeting. We'll have plenty of public comments on the cell signal. First item, I'd like to open the continued public hearing from 2/26 on the earth removal for 19 Smith Point Road, 19 SBR Hancock Associates. I'd like to acknowledge the letter we received from Chief Fitzgerald asking due to the nature of the road for a public, for a police detail during the trucking of the fill. The board made a site visit on Saturday. And any further comments from the board on this? Ms. Creighton.
I guess I did talk to a couple of the neighbors there, and they said that they had had a, some significant concerns about trucks, the speed of the trucks when they were doing the work there this summer. So I think Chief Fitzgerald's recommendation for detail at the site and perhaps some, some really explicit communications with the trucking folks about the speed at which they go down that road. Maybe, maybe get from Chief Fitzgerald a suggested limit, maybe 15 miles per hour or something.
It already isn't that area.
Well, but that they get, that they get, actually, the drivers be given a, you know, explicit. And I also think that, you know, to do, that it should be, to the extent possible, grouped in, you know, sort of over a long duration, that we could maybe really encourage the applicant to do it, you know, over, you know, in a concerted effort so that it's, it's all one day or all, I mean, it's not going to be one day, but, but it's, I don't know. Mark, do you have a suggestion on that?
Yeah, well, when we were there, at least, I talked to, where was the contractor who's there, and he said most of the trucking would come in within a four-day period. Most of the material brought in. Obviously, there's time for trucks to remove the building. Now, that will take some time, and, and site prep, there'll be some trucks leaving as well. But for, to bring in the majority of the fill will be over a four-day period.
I mean, I wonder if there should be a detail, if there's a certain, over a certain number of trucks per, on a day, if there should be a detail, not just at the site, but at the start of the road. And there's so many walking, it is a huge walking route. And I don't know if that's overkill, but.
I think that's probably a little out of our purview. We're just doing the.
We, we, I think we could condition a police detail. I think that's out of our realm, or safety is part of our.
Yeah, I mean, safety is part of your purview, so you could require, because that there be a police detail on site at the entrance as trucks are coming and going to make sure that, you know, there's not a car coming up the other way, or if there are people walking, you'd be able to, you know, something like that. I don't think it's necessary every day.
Right.
You know, but I think, but for the, the time period in which, at the very least, the fill material is being brought to the site, that would be one. And I guess, you know, you could, if you felt it was important, you probably could require that when the demolition material is being removed from the site, you know, not when they bring a backhoe in and dig out a little dirt.
Right, right.
But maybe for the demo of the house, I don't recall how many days he said. They're trying to remove anything that's usable from the building first.
Right.
Before they crush it.
Right, so I mean, maybe is there a way, we could say if it's over a certain number of trucks in a day.
Is the applicant on?
Yes. Chair is there.
Good evening, Chief Lockers and Hancock Associates.
Are you, have an idea of the duration of the trucking for the demolition and the fill?
So here with us tonight is Jeff Lawler, who's the contractor. Jeff, do you have an idea of those kind of timelines?
Yeah, so the demo debris removal would be approximately, like a, over a three- to four-day period of trucking. And the same goes for bringing in the fill. It would be about a, about a four-day period.
Okay. Can they go out with the demo and come back with the fill?
Well, they. Yeah, unfortunately not for the demo. The demo will be on, in like, you know, dump, forty-yard dumpsters. But the, you know, any, any other debris, like they're removing, concrete, stone, unsuitable soils, those trucks would bring good material in as they bring the other soils out. So we will take advantage of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Otherwise, I'll.
Just questions about erosion control. I don't know if this is over an acre, but there will be a lot of disturbance, and we're right on the water's edge, potentially a very windy site, so there may be wind erosion as well as rain erosion. So could you address how you'll keep the disturbed area of soils for that whole duration protected from eroding into water bodies or elsewhere?
Well, we, yeah, we have the erosion control up, as you saw, on the site visit. We'll just, you know, maintain that daily and walk the site multiple times a day to, you know, keep debris from blowing around.
And will the, if you have a soil stockpile either going out or coming in, will that be covered as well?
It, it will. We're going to try to minimize that. I think we'll, we'll take out what we excavate or, or demo and, and then bring in what we need to, and spread it. So we'll minimize any, any stockpile. And if we do stockpile, it'll be out, away from the erosion control.
Okay. And if you have a storm in the forecast, say you've got a plan to get a logistic plan.
We'll plan ahead, yeah. We'll, we'll, like I said, we're going to minimize what, what we stockpile anyway, but if we were to have a stockpile, we would cover it.
Thank you.
Motion. More questions?
I'm just trying to think of a threshold at which we want them to have this, what's, the Chief Fitzgerald says it would be necessary to have a police detail present when construction begins. So the question is sort of, what's the extent of our, it seems unreasonable to ask for a police detail through the entire construction process. That's, I don't think that's what he's saying.
Yeah, I would modify it to when they're moving in the soil and when they're taking out the debris.
Yeah, maybe we can.
So two, four-day windows.
So his letter did say when they, when they were bringing in the hundred.
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards. So if we want to add on to that.
I would say maybe on a threshold, if they're bringing in more than, bringing in or out more than 10 trucks, truckloads. I mean, if you're going to do it over a four-day period, that would reduce the number of days that you have police detail, but if.
I think they've done that on other sites that, that, and claim they have, don't go over the bylaw limit and have had many trucks a day. I think that's a bit hard.
Laura has, maybe has.
I was, sorry. I was just going to.
This one, we got a specific request from the chief, so.
Yeah. I think the chief should dictate. 10 is arbitrary, so, you know, it might, 10 could be a heck of a lot of trucks in one day, causing disturbance on an arrow road. Or if it's spread out over four, so. Sure. Yeah, I think that maybe we could ask for the PD to just make a visit when construction starts and if they need to adjust, you know, duration.
You have to, you have to be a little more specific than that, yeah. And 10 trucks a day over the course of an eight or 10-hour day is like one an hour. So that's, that's really nothing, or pretty minimal. So I think if we, if we just specify during the, during the demo and the removal of the demolition of the building and site debris, okay, and then during the, yeah, bringing in of the fill material and just specify it that specifically. So there's an extra truck or two, obviously, we don't expect you to have to call.
Right, right.
You know, you're bringing the lome in, you know, at the end of the job, you don't need a detail. But for, for bringing in the majority of the fill or bringing out the building or any other major excavation, I mean, again, you know, I'm sure the chief will be reasonable.
And to observe their local speed limit, which is.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the permit based with the conditions we just brought forth? Somebody?
So I would just add, like I say, a pre-construction meeting with the chief and myself, with the contractor, just so that everybody hears and talks about the same thing. And then that should.
Okay.
Right. So moved.
Second.
Including a pre-construction meeting, okay.
Yeah, and then we'll get a final site. Mark will, will you write up a?
You'll write up a decision.
Yeah.
I'll write up a decision. That's great.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll vote. Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Filbrick?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay. Thank you. The, for the public, the public hearing is scheduled for seven, so I'm going to take another item ahead of that, hopefully, to move on that. And that would be the A and R for 155 School Street, PHB and LMV Trust, Mina. The applicant's here. Thank you, welcome, and just identify as well.
Mary Mina.
Your address?
155 School Street, Manchester.
Give us a brief.
We, my sister and brother and I inherited the property from my address. We touched on the PHB nominee trust, and we are trying to buy them up into, my sister and brother getting the parents' old house, and that my husband and I can get the smaller house and back. And so we are just kind of figuring the lot line, so, and moving and work with Scott Grover, our lawyer, and Russ Brown in terms of, you know, what to, where to move along to, and that's the request is to move the line. So the field that kind of goes with 157 would actually be long than 157, if you know that house at all. Scott, I mean, the front of that house sort of faces that field. And I imagine it's probably the original design of that front of the house, I guess.
Okay. Are there any easements on the property?
There are no easements on the property.
I asked the building inspector to, while fine, but he was on vacation, but I have comments from Mark. Mark, if I look at this and.
Yeah, it appears that both lots still have frontage. They're not changing the frontage. All they're doing is moving the lot line. And the, at the front yard setback, it says 150, which is the distance it needs to maintain there. Then the lot narrows down where the driveway is going to the house in the back, number 155. And so, you know, it's just, it appears that that dotted lot line is disappearing, so because that's the field that the house faces.
Should I come, can I walk over?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So that's the field that the house faces.
Yes, yes, right. This is the, we used to be the front of the house, and actually, there used to be a cut right there, and I'm guessing it probably came up there, so.
So it does meet the standard for the format.
Gail, you got a hand raise?
I do. When people are sitting on the back bench, it's very difficult to hear them. If they could stand and step forward, they'll be closer to the mics that are in the center of the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Okay, any comments from the board? Questions?
I just had a couple of questions. Do you know how far the driveway is from the two lot lines? So from the lot line to the right and then to the left, because I know the Essex County Club driveway is right there, right?
Right, so which, which question is she, which question?
So I see that there's, the width is 40 feet.
Yeah.
Of this new line.
Yeah.
So then how far is the driveway from the existing house new line, lot one?
Can you, I don't understand the question.
Oh, this is an existing.
How far is it set back?
This is an existing driveway, right?
Right.
Oh, it is.
Yeah, the driveway's there, yeah.
So how far is it now from the new line? I'm just wondering if it's set back enough, like at least five feet, right?
It's seven feet between the, this big line and this, and the driveway.
Seven feet?
Yeah, I mean, I can show you.
On that side?
This is seven.
So that's seven feet?
Right there, that little, see that right there, yeah.
And then this would be more. Thank you.
Any other board questions? Laura?
Just a clarification. So the kind of hammerhead shape of the lot line is to maintain the required 150-foot frontage there.
Yeah.
And the existing driveway to both houses. So really, the only change that you're making is moving the old lot line and making this kind of dogleg to push that line.
Right, right, to kind of give, push that lot.
Fields to this house. Okay.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
All right, I move that we endorse the approval, not required, plan of, prepared for Peter and Lucy Vermillion by rural surveys dated 2/19/2024. Scale, where's the scale? One inch equals 60 feet. Sorry, it's the, let me rephrase that. It's the plan of land prepared for PHB nominee trust and LMV nominee trust, revised November 1st, 2023. Sorry, Gail. One inch equals 60 feet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ready to vote, Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Filbrick?
Yes.
Ms. Creighton?
Yes.
Ms. Olmey? Ms. Tenny?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. I don't have a Mylar.
I have a.
Okay. And then how many copies of the paper, I should wait someone? Five?
Two copies of the paper and one Mylar come back to the file, and the property owner gets the Mylar.
Do I come back in time to get it?
Thank you.
Okay, well, we did that pretty quick. I'm wondering if we can get one more in. That would be phenomenal. So we have. So this is an A and R for 12 Plum Hill Road, Hancock Associates, where Eminem and McLaughlin sued applicants. Lot lot.
Matt, you have an option, get that decision.
Okay, welcome. Give us a brief overview of what's going on in here.
Sure. So this is a, this is an existing lot that the owners actually used County, Ancient County Way as access, but they have frontage on Summer Street. There is enough room on Summer Street to have frontage for two lots. So what we're submitting is an A and R for two lots in a single residency with frontage of 150 feet for the existing lot and 164.90 feet for the new lot, which we're referring to as lot 7B. Lot 7B has 6,067,661 square feet or just over 1.5 acres. The existing lot that remains, what we're referring to as lot 7A, is 108,072 square feet or just shy of 2.5 acres. Lot B does have a little bit of wetlands in it, which is shown about midway back. And basically, the, the plan that you're seeing in front of you shows setback lines for frontier, front, side, and rear. And that's pretty much it. Next little lot.
Mark, you say you review this?
Yes.
Each crank, you know?
Yes, it does.
Any questions from the board?
So this ends up with two lots or three lots?
Two. So we're taking one existing lot and we're making it.
Two lots.
Yep.
And I guess I'm confused. So on Summer Street, there's a frontage of 164 and then a frontage of 150.
Correct.
Are both lots having frontages on Summer?
Yes. So legally, they have to because Ancient County Way is not considered a public right of law.
Even though they use it?
Yeah, well, that's, that's where their driveway has been since they built the house, and that's what they use.
I mean, that's not a public way, but it's a way.
It is a way, but for frontage to be allowed is based upon.
So are they going to actually build a driveway along this thing, or is it just?
No, they're maintaining their existing driveway, it's just so that they can have frontage there.
So the town portion ends prior to their driveway?
Yep.
And it's, as you can see, just a little grappled road, so.
Yeah. Does the town plow all the way down there?
Ancient County Way?
Yeah.
I don't really consider it.
Mary?
So they're going to still have the driveway to Ancient County Way?
Yes.
But if they sold this and the frontage is Summer Street, could somebody have a driveway down to Summer Street? What would they do now?
There's no reason they couldn't, but they'd have to go through your process for a driveway opening. But I don't see any reason that they would, because it's a, as it stands, their driveway's fully functional.
Well, my concern would be, because then the wetlands is right there, and it looks like there's only, I don't know where the driveway would be.
Ideally, there's no reason for them to change their driveway location. It's, it's solely for frontage, is what it is, why we're maintaining it on Summer Street.
So a mere presence of wetlands on a lot doesn't necessarily disqualify it, as long as it's a permissible project. In other words, they could get a permit to cross the wetlands or a driveway to the buildable portion, which already has a house on it, so. So the fact that they have to do intermittent stream crossing is not a unpermissible issue, so.
Any other questions from the board? Any motion?
I'll move that we endorse the plan for 12 Plum Hill Road, prepared for Brian and Harvey to post C Street by Hancock Associates. What's the date here?
The plan dates March 1st.
Plan date, oh, thank you, March 1st, and scale of one inch, one inch equals 50 feet as an approval, not required.
Your second.
Yes.
And you put a discretion in this, Tenny?
No, just a question. So if 7B becomes a buildable lot line because it meets the frontage and the setback and so forth, if there were to be a property built in the future, I assume it would have to go through the Concom as far as its adjacency to wetlands and.
Yes, as long as it's within the hundreds of that, we would have to go before.
Okay, so we're not giving development permission for that. Thank you.
And for the discussion, we'll take a vote. Vote call vote, Ms. Foley?
Yes.
Ms. Filbrick?
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Okay. Time here. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Okay. 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 Welcome.
Oh, yes, hi. How are you? Yes. Yeah, we want you sort of in the middle of the room.
That's right. I hear. This is from our question today.
Oh, right. Yeah. Great. Yeah. Great. Hi, Sarah. Hi, Lauren. Please meet here.
It's a little, the screen is there.
We've got to get, we've got to get. Hi, Sarah, I'm great.
Sarah, nice to meet you. I do have cards, it's helpful. Rodman's done.
Sue Filbrick? Certainly. Mark, Mary, great if we could get names, cards. There's some that are half-done, and I have one. We can practically, we're just putting on your heads. Oh, sorry. Well, you need one too, then. But we actually, yeah, we have some in the other room that are released.
It's very easy to look you up.
I'll put some to the next meeting, I'll.
I have one, and I have one from my prior days.
Yes. We called this calling contract.
It matches.
Well, they were originally called Cartier and Seagull.
Is it Benny? We don't really see Cartier anymore.
Okay, everyone settled? So, yeah, if you're going to speak, try to stand through at the center so the mic can pick you up. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on the application of O'Farrell LLC for special permit and site plan review required under section 4.2, point D, 2019, and sections 12.5 and 12.6. Zoning bylaws constructed 260,000-square-foot office and research and development facility with a parking garage and subsurface parking facility, 535 spaces, and other associated site improvements on a 41.4 acre parcel located at Atwater Ave, Assessors Map 37, lot number seven, and a, in this LCD zoning district filed with the town clerk on January 18, 2024. The public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket. So just a few ground rules on the procedure. We will hear some specifics from the applicant. The applicant, as I, my understanding, will provide a 45-minute to one-hour overview of the project, specifically permitting to date, relief that's being asked for. total of 535 spaces and other associated site improvements on a 41.4 acre parcel located at Atwater Ave. Assessors map 37, lot number seven, and a, in this LCD zoning district, filed with the town clerk on January 18, 2024. The public hearing notice has been duly noticed and advertised in the cricket. So just a few ground rules on the procedure. We will hear some specifics from the applicant. The applicant, as I understand, will provide a 45-minute to one-hour overview of the project, specifically permitting to date, relief that's being asked for, history and needs and mission of cell signaling technology, civil site conditions, building design and landscape architecture, sustainability, and any other expert discussion that may come up. I will, after the presentation, I'll call on board members for questions and concerns. Additionally, I will call on town planner Mark Resnick for additional comments. Any comments or questions from town services, DPW, police, fire, and then comments from our peer reviewer Weston Sampson. I will then take general comments and questions from the podler. Hearing is expected to continue to future dates on which specific topics will be discussed, including comments from the peer review. Sample future topics will include site plan, drainage, water supply protection, traffic, site lighting, landscaping, biohabitation, geothermal, and financial. With that in mind, I will turn the, it over to you, Mark. Do you need us help with slides or?
Matt will be doing that.
So I got to make you a co-host?
Yep.
That's what I, that's what you were asking. Where do I do that? Where are you on this?
On me, I'm on the top row, but I don't really.
What did you come up as in any lines?
Anthony Connors.
I don't see. Anthony Connors. Mark, so yours?
Good evening. I'm Mark Glofsky, a lawyer with offices at 8 Washington Street in Beverly. And as there may be an audience viewing the meeting tonight for whom this is the first impression, we may, will be repeating some information that we've already presented to the planning board. But with me tonight as part of the presentation team, or as the presentation team, I'm just Jimmy Kimmel tonight. As the presentation team will be Matt Connors, who is the lead civil engineer from Hancock Associates, Craig Thompson, who is the chief operating officer at Cell Signaling, Greg Keller, construction manager from Columbia Construction, Anthony Machetti, who is the sustainability officer from Cell Signaling, Samir Sarochi, the lead architect from HGA, Lynn Gisika, who is the lead landscape architect from Studio 2112. And Peter, you're here with us, but I'm not sure you have a speaking role yet. We'll, we'll make. And we have others, we have others here from Cell Signaling too, but those are the people who will be presenting tonight. Just following up on your introduction, I will do a little bit of the history, I guess. And this project started several years ago when Michael Combe and the management team at Cell Signaling recognized that the growth and requirements of the company weren't being satisfied by its existing facilities on Tozer Road in Beverly, Tozer Road in Danvers, Beverly, and, in Beverly, and Trask Lane in Danvers. Thank you. So at that point, the company conducted a search for properties on the North Shore with the help of Peter Bordeaux. Numerous properties were looked at that would have been less expensive to acquire and develop with fewer hurdles. But Michael Combe kept coming back. Kept coming back to him. Here he is. Cell Signaling's founder and chief and CEO was attracted to the site in Manchester, notwithstanding the fact that it was going to be significantly more expensive and with numerous issues in terms of development. In any event, he was persistent and the property was acquired in July of 2022. Since then, there's been a lot of homework done. First off, we realized that the zoning by law in the town wouldn't allow our use at that site. And so with the help of the planning board, we were able to coordinate amendment of the zoning by law, which allows us to be here tonight, not necessarily to get what we're asking for as of right, but to prove our case. And what you did was open the door for us. And it's now up to us to prove our case. Additionally, some of the dimensional requirements in the zoning by law were modified because previously, for instance, the height of a building in the limited commercial district was limited to 35 feet. And as we've explained to you before, the floor height for laboratory buildings requires at least 15 feet. And so it just wouldn't work that way. But with your help and ultimately with the help of voters at town meeting, the zoning by law was modified so that we could consider the property for this project. That began a process of design and site review. And in the course of that process, it was determined that notwithstanding the 55-foot height limit, because of the topography and other unique conditions of the site, we needed relief from the zoning board. So with the help of the zoning board, we were able to obtain variances that enable us to request permission to build the building that is going to be proposed this evening. The site was attractive to Michael, I think, because of its relationship with the natural environment and because of its condition. Speaking for him, interrupt me if you like, but I think he saw an opportunity to restore a piece of significantly scarred landscape. He's always been an environmentalist, and this had particular appeal to him. He's also a town resident, and that added an extra twist. It helps that I caught my first road trip on Melbrough too. So what we're, what we're going to do with this team tonight is present an overview of the project. As your chairman explained moments ago, we anticipate subsequent meetings. We'll delve into the performance standards that is set forth in the zoning by law. We anticipate that we'll have in-depth discussions about traffic, lighting, noise, civil engineering, et cetera. And we are thoroughly prepared for those discussions. We look forward to the peer review from Weston Sampson. So with that, I would like to introduce Craig to give you a little bit of the history of Cell Signaling and why this project is important to meet the needs of the company.
Thank you, Mark. I'm going to stand for this, just more used to doing that. I am the chief operating officer at CST. I have been at the company for over 19 years now, so I have a pretty strong familiarity with the company and what its needs are and the growth of it. I wanted to start out by giving a little background information. Many of you are probably familiar with the, with the company and some of our background, but there may be people watching going, "No, I'm not familiar." So I wanted to start off with that, you know, background. But first, I want to thank everyone here, thank the board, certainly the town of Manchester for having us present today. Was very excited about this milestone. And certainly, like I say, behalf of the company, Michael, who's there in the background now, and the Combe family, you know, we're very excited about this project. So we have a, you know, a very simple, but I think exciting mission. And that quite simply is to enable personalized medicine by providing scientists around the globe with the highest quality research products. And in addition to our mission to enable, you know, sort of to advance science and therapeutics, we have, I would almost say, an equally important mission. And that is to do so in a manner that is both environmentally and socially responsible. And these are equal pillars, I think, of CST. And something, quite frankly, I think makes us unique. Okay. The company was founded 25 years ago now by Michael. It came out of New England Biolabs, which was founded by Michael's father several years ago. And we share many of the same values as a result. And we've been very successful over the past 25 years. Our products are now distributed in over 60 countries around the globe. And I think it's safe to say that every leading life science institute in the world working in areas of cell biology uses our products. And they are, in fact, of the highest quality. Our headquarters are in Danvers, as Mark said, and primary production facility nearby in Beverly. We also have sites internationally as well that serve for greater distribution and support of our customers. We have a site that serves in Europe, in the Netherlands, and then one in Tokyo and another in Shanghai. And we have approximately 700 employees globally. But I think it's important to point out that the vast majority of these employees are located here in Massachusetts, right here on the North Shore. All of our laboratories, whether it's R and D or manufacturing, is done here. So everything is developed and manufactured and comes out of the North Shore here to the rest of the world. And that is something that, you know, we want to very much continue to do as we continue to grow. There are a number of values that over the last 25 years that serve as a foundation for how CST operates. It's how we make decisions, and it helps develop and support the culture of our company. And that includes innovative science, absolute best-in-class products, which is something we are known for, engaged employees, and social responsibility. These are all values that are very important to us and is something that we use on a daily basis to make citizens and drive things. And over the course of that 25 years, we have now developed and released over 15,000 products that scientists all over the world use. And these are scientists working to better understand disease. These are diseases that commonly affect humans, such as cancer, diabetes, and Alzheimer's disease. And it's through a better understanding of disease that enables these same scientists to then develop better therapeutics. So we give the scientists the tools, and then they use that to better understand biology and develop better therapeutics. And those are scientists in both academics as well as in biopharma companies. All right. And we've had the pleasure, over the years, to receive many awards and have been recognized for both the innovation and quality and contributions that our products make to science, but also the culture of our company. And these are just a few awards that were given out even just last year. And through our efforts, as part of our, you know, environmental and social responsibility, we are focused on protecting the environment, supporting both the local as well as global community, and inspiring the next generation of scientists through a variety of grants, scholarships, and a really robust interim program that is utilized by, you know, many of the young folks in the local community who then go on oftentimes to careers in science, to further, you know, advance science. We're also really proud that just recently, over the last couple of years, we became the first life science company to become members of 1% for the Planet. And 1% for the Planet is an organization that, when you commit to it, you agree that you are going to use 1% of your top-line revenue to support the type of activities shown here. And they're all approved by 1% for the Planet. And again, we are, you know, we feel like we're leading by example. It's not just enough for us to act the way we talk, but we're trying to get others to do so as well and join us in this effort. I think this slide is probably one of my favorites. It helps in a very simple way sum up what CST is all about, which is quite simply, doing good science is important, but just doing good is important as well. And it's the combination of these two things that, you know, really create the value that CST brings to both the local community and the greater scientific community around the globe. So back to what we're really here for. We've been very fortunate, very successful over the past 25 years. As a result of our success, and in order to continue to support our mission, which is to support science around the globe, our customers are demanding more products. And in order to meet the demands of our customers and support our mission, we need to invest further in research and development. Our facilities in Danvers and Beverly have been fantastic, and we expect them to continue to be fantastic to support the company in years to come. But we're essentially at capacity there. We really have very little room for growth. And so we need to find a place to expand. And as Mark said, we found that location here in Manchester. The Atwater Ave site provides CST with an opportunity, not only to provide the future growth of our company, but to restore a blighted site and bring back, you know, I would say, almost maybe the glory that the site once was. And we see that as both an opportunity as well as a commitment, you know, to the community in doing so. We estimate that upon completion of Phase 1, there would be anywhere from maybe 175 to 200 employees on site. And upon completion of Phase 2, it would eventually enable approximately 500 employees to be located on site. Now, every decision made by the company considers environmental impact as well as safety. We've done our best over the years, and the site in Atwater is an opportunity for us to continue to minimize our impact on the environment. So when it comes to environmental safety, safety of our employees, we're really proud that CST is an excellent standard with all regular products. We are registered, we're a small quantity generator for hazardous waste, meaning we don't generate large quantities. And all hazardous waste is collected and removed by a licensed third party. None of it goes down the drain. All wastewater at CST is non-hazardous, and to be on the safe tight is all pH-neutralized prior to discharge as well. So again, very limited impact on the local environment. We also don't work with infectious disease. We do operate at a BL2 safety level, but that allows our labs to work with basically human cells and tissues, which are the exact same materials that our customers use in their research labs and academics or in biopharmers. That allows us to develop the products and test the products using the same systems that our customers use. And with that, I'm going to, you know, turn it over, I guess, to the rest of my colleagues here to really tell us a lot more about the fantastic site that's really, you know, that's being developed here. In the meantime, over the course of the next several months, myself and others, we look forward to engaging with you and the rest of the community to ensure all your questions or concerns are addressed so that you know exactly what you're getting into. Thank you.
I'll follow Craig, please. My name is Samir Sarochi. I'm principal with HGA and the lead designer for the project. And we are thrilled to be involved in this project. As you heard from Craig, Cell Signaling and their vision and the goals for the project are exemplary. And it's a dream project for us because it really is thinking on a holistic approach to development. And what we mean by holistic approach, the AIA, actually, the American Institute for Architects, have shifted their thinking recently in equating design excellence. They created what's called the framework for design excellence. And it shifted from being kind of a beauty contest about the aesthetics of design to really put it in par with how you impact the environment and community. We are adopted of that framework. And the project here at Cell Signaling is an exemplary one that puts all of these things on an equal footing. So we've assembled a great team of consultants. To do this in a holistic way, you need all of these skills to come to bear. And these are reputable firms that do this nationally and internationally. And you'll hear from some of us today, and I'm sure during the review process, you'll be seeing more of the consulting. So I want to talk about the master plan. We started by setting out a master plan for the whole site. I know the pointer here wouldn't work on the monitor, so I'm going to just point with my fingers. So the key kind of construct that organizes the whole master plan on site is the loop road. Go in and the loop road takes you all around. And if those of you who have seen the site, they know that it is actually, because of the quarry activities, there is a cliff of about 40 feet that is in the middle of this development area. That creates two levels, what we call the upper meadow and the quarry bottom. And the master plan aimed to actually unite those two by placing the buildings in a way that mitigates the two levels and connects them. So you'll see further in the architecture how we do that. So the idea of this V-shaped arrangement of the two buildings with the lobby in the middle. middle is to face north and northwest, beautiful hillside around us, the kind of forest around us. To the east, there is a service yard hidden kind of in a low part of the site as well as the garage. We picked that location for the garage because it's slowest and will have the least impact visually. The garage is connected to the building on two levels. And two other main goals for the master plan, where if you see up to the north of our site is this kind of industrial Brady property. And CST's request of us was to do an actual shielding visually of that. And what we did is this birmingham on the north edge of the site and planting that is at a tall kind of berm to visually shield that property. And another request from CST that comes channeling the board's request and the town's concern about the view from 128 to the development. And I'll give more specific views later on as we describe the architecture of how we achieve that. With that, I turn it over to Matt.
Actually, we went a little out of order. I think that Matt was going to...
Out of order?
Are we in order?
We are.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of made it up in the beginning, but...
You changed the order on the page.
Anthony, you can take your finger on the screen and move the little... If you stand up, move that window off to the side. There you go.
Oh, snazzy.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
So what we want to do is just to make sure everybody's on the same page, what you guys want to see. So we've heard you want to focus this meeting more on a general overview and then future meetings on specific pieces. So our understanding is you want to talk about traffic at the second meeting. You want to talk about civil and landscape.
Well, let me just interrupt you. It's dependent on how the peer reviews stuff go. So I wouldn't specifically say that this is the order right now.
Right.
So similar.
Completely understand. It's, you know, as long as we're communicating, we can figure out who we need to bring at that so that not everybody's in there filling up the back of your room. So what I'd like to do, I'm a civil engineer for the project. I'm going to take you from a very high level. I know you guys know what the project is, but people online might not, and just kind of drill in here. So the project location is right off 128, where the big star is. That's very hard to miss. And if you look at an aerial, and in purple is the lot lines that are associated with it, you can see that to the north of the site, which is over here. So this is our project site. And to the north, we have an industrial area. This is the Brady property. Just north of that, this is a large wetland. And as we go to the west, this is the, there's a doctor's office in this area, and this is the Black Earth site, which is going to be the future PPW site. Heading to the, you'll see southwest of the site, this is the Manchester Athletic Club. And we have 128 separating the rest of the town. So drilling in a little bit more, this site has been used and abused for a while. It's a former quarry. It currently has a lot of earthmoving equipment on it. There's a lot of stockpiles going on. So you can see it's, there's not much cover. What cover is there, we're going to try to re-keep, and Lynn's going to get into that in detail later on. And when you look at zoning, anywhere to the north of 128 is limited commercial, and we fit in with that. And anywhere to the south is single residential aid. So there's quite a large buffer between any of them that we're doing and the nearest residential property. The next few photos are basically taking you through the site. I'm going to focus a lot on this big rock out crop because that's pretty much what we had to design around. Samir had hours and days and months of trying to figure out how to make this work with the project, and we've had the same amount of time trying to figure out how to make all the utilities and stormwater work around. So this is facing east. You're coming up, I think behind is the Beaverbrook Road, and you're facing east, and you see the very large escarpment that's going on. This is facing west. There is an existing dirt gravel drive that basically goes around the entire feature. So we're facing west. And again, you can see that this is a very large obstacle that we have to overcome. You can also see there's just about no topsoil. There is no topsoil. There's very limited trees on the site. It's all been pretty much pushed away, and there's stockpiles from earthwork going on all the time. Going up on top of the our crop, this is looking to the north. Up in the distance, you can see the lookout tower. But you're looking down, you can see the neighboring industrial site, the old storage facility. And you can see all the earthquake equipment that's on there and the soil stockpiles that we're working around. And again, this is focused more on, you know, just the big drop that's there, and you can kind of see how that's a very big impediment. This is the upper meadow area, or what we're calling the upper meadow area. We're trying to keep this as much as green as possible. There is open space, but as you look out, you're actually looking to the south. 128 is right there, but you can't see it. You're up above it. And there is a natural tree ring that we are trying to maintain. And this is going to be the main entry into the site. You're actually looking down towards the Mac, which is on the left, and the main entry is way down at the end. But you can see from the large-scale erosion that's going on on the site that lack of topsoil is really a problem. So the zoning for the site has 150-foot setbacks to all roof. So you can, so from 128, we're showing 100 feet, and from Atwater Ave over there on the left, we also have 150 feet. All of the setbacks are 100 feet. The building is completely out of the setbacks in all locations. When you look at what we're doing on the site, the areas that are in dark green, those are existing tree areas that we're trying to maintain. The lighter green is what's going to be lawn areas. And again, Lynn's going to really dive into that. Our main buildings are in the peach color. There's a ring road that goes around the entire site, which provides access and facilities and support structures to the main buildings. In the upper right-hand corner, we're providing parking areas to the neighboring trustees of the reservation. And we're also providing access through the ring road to that area. There's a lighter green at our stormwater facilities. And you can see we've parsed them to the left and to the right to try to mimic what's going on out there right now. This plant shows the stormwater system. So pretty much all stormwater impacts we are taking to the upper left or the right. The natural location for water to leave this site is in the upper left corner. As you come around on the right side, stormwater comes down into this basin, basically settling an infiltration basin. It overflows and goes to the basins on the left. The lower basin is a wet meadow type setup. It's going to be planted. It's going to look very nice. And then the larger basin on the bottom is an infiltration basin. Flows from that basin, discharged out into the wetland, and that's basically what they're doing right now. This is water and sewer. So water is in blue, sewer is in green. Water is completely ringed on the ring road, so we have access point. And water goes down to the south side. It's actually going underneath 128 in an existing culvert. Sewer is similar. We're grabbing it from the lowest side of the buildings, which is the northern part. Goes to a pump station and then goes through Forest Main again. It's going down through 128 to Mill Street. This is gas and electric. Electric is in red, gas is in yellow. We are basically getting gas and electric from Atwater Ave. That's in process as we go. Electric comes into the site. There is a generation facility for each of the Phase One, Phase Two, as we're looking at this. And then gas comes in and it provides services to both buildings separately. We are going for a geothermal system, Phase One, Phase Two, as outlined. I know there's three areas here, but basically they're Phase One, Phase Two. And they are, they're bore fields. We can discuss that at a later meeting. And for traffic, we've done a study all along School Street at several locations. And basically, what that study came back and said, we have offsite mitigations of limited pavement marking or traffic signage, excuse me, at the intersection of School Street and Atwater. There's the potential for traffic control signal at the intersection of School Street, and this is to be determined in the Phase Two. After we get Phase One, Phase Two, we'll come back, we'll study it, we'll make sure what's going on as well. And then we have accommodations for bicycles along School Street. Construction schedule is very high level at this point, but what we're expecting is end of 2024, we'll be doing blast home. End of 2024, beginning of 2025, we'll be doing geothermal. We'll roll into site grading in 2025. Utilities will come at the end of 2025. Site utilities will be most of 2025 for the actual work that's on the site. But I should separate Atwater utilities and actually getting that electric and gas to the site, making sure that we can get across the brook and through the wetland and making sure everything's working well. Then we're going to have foundations with Precast, that's 2026. Building in construction in earnest is going to start 2026 and roll through to 2027, and then we'll wrap it up with hardscapes and landscapes at the end of 2027.
That's Phase One.
That is Phase One. And I'm going to hand it over to Samir.
Excuse me, totally changed the program. According to...
So following up on the kind of master plan description, here's an aerial view looking north, and you see that we selected to create this cliff of granite as a sort of central feature, and the buildings flanking it and framing a series of outdoor spaces. The upper space is what we're calling the upper quad, and it is going to be a sort of a cloistered space on three sides, and it drops down to what we're calling the quarry garden. The building is actually from the lower end. If you look at it, it's five stories tall, but on the upper meadow, it's only two stories tall. And our approach architecturally to break down the mass is what we're calling kind of the cascading cubes, as you see here. So this is kind of transitioning from the upper meadow, heading down, and as you see, it's kind of broken down into volumes that cascade. The yellow brick area is primarily where the labs and the offices are, and what you see enlased on the, kind of, this is the west side of the building, is what we call the social spine. In the background, on top, is the main lobby and the entrance. And this social spine is the way we... So here's the view, an aerial view of the upper meadow, and that's where you see only two stories tall with a mechanical room above. And the main entrance is the glass pavilion that is our lobby and multi-use space. So the glass lobby is meant to be this space for mining, gathering, this kind of a social hub, social living room for the whole complex. And of course, it will be between Phase One and Phase Two connecting. It is built out of mass timber, and that's to lower the carbon, embodied carbon of the structure and really frame the great views towards north. Next. In terms of materials, what we're trying to do is integrate into the site with the materials. We've chosen a base of granite that steps up, and that's where we're kind of connecting to the granite on the cliff. And there's two tones of brick that we're using. There's a podium of the lowest two floors that will be gray brick, and then we have this kind of what's called the sunburst, yellow-orange type brick that is the body of the rest of the building. And we're using a copper tone color to create those features around the vertical elements on the west facade. So this is inspired by a lot of, you know, England traditional work and craftsmanship. The granite, we're trying to use something that is local tape and/or kind of something that is links well visually to the granite on site. And the brick, again, will be articulating in a very traditional New England mythology, and we show an example of this kind of copper fins that will articulate to a side. And with that, I want to turn it over to Anthony, walk us through all the sustainability features that are both in the building and the site.
Yeah, thanks, Samir. I'll stand up quickly. Again, Anthony Bichardy, Sustainability Director at Self-Signaling. This is a really exciting project. I'm super excited to be part of it. It's an exciting opportunity for us. It's the first time we've built our own building from the ground up. So when we look at some of the sustainability features, we have a lot more opportunities to incorporate and go above and beyond what we've been able to do in our two existing spaces. There's a lot to look at on this slide. I just wanted to do a quick introduction of myself and some of the features, and I think in subsequent meetings, we can get into more detail and talk in, about some of these specifically. But high level, looking at our sustainability goals, we're really driving for building electrification, so reducing to eliminate fossil fuel use, to really lower and eliminate our greenhouse gas emissions to combat climate change. In addition to the energy and emission side of things, healthier materials and occupant health and well-being is also an important component. So in the actual spaces and the materials on the previous slide, you know, furniture, indoor environmental quality, indoor air quality, all super important components for our employees and scientists who are going to be in the building or community members and other peers who may be visiting. Just calling out some of the features on the site, we are obviously looking to maximize onsite renewables for that building electrification. So rooftop solar wherever we can put it. You can see the garage with the other one on top of it, and solar encompassing the entire roof there. As Matt mentioned, geothermal will be used for heating, cooling, and domestic hot water for both spaces. We've also done a lot looking at connecting to nature, both indoor and outdoor spaces. On the envelope side of things, we are looking at utilizing a new cutting-edge backing insulated flask technology, which is really a game changer, and looking at the way stretch codes and energy codes are progressing. Envelopes a key component for us to be able to reduce our load and electricity, heating and cooling. So that's really exciting. Bringing in lots of natural light into the spaces for our scientists and employees who will be in the buildings. And then lastly, I would just add, we're also looking at battery storage, and Lynn's going to get more into talking about native plantings. And Matt's talked a little bit about stormwater, and I want, no, we'll get more into that on the civil and site side of things. But we've really designed the stormwater with resilience in mind, so we're looking at the 2090 projections, considering climate change and increased intensity and frequency of precipitation events. So it's really exciting to be able to develop the site along those lines. We are also working with an ecologist that we brought on board that's working closely with Lynn. Excited to be here and looking forward to getting into more depth about all these features.
Now, we're tracking certification, LEED Gold, Well Platinum, and LEED Zero Carbon. So all these will be certification that we're tracking.
Yeah, we're really using those to help guide our project teams. So LEED Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design is really helping with the construction, development of the site. When we think about well, it's really, okay, once the building is turned over to us and we're in occupant... When we think about well, it's really, okay, once the building is turned over to us and we're in occupancy in the building, how are we operating the building from a facilities perspective? And how are we engaging in health and wellbeing for everybody who's interacting with the building and the community?
The next two slides are about the view from 128. So we did a lot of modeling and digital modeling. And the images that you see on the bottom right are of the sort of an aerial with 128. This is looking north. And the bottom left image is with the development scene from high up. And as you drop down from the same angle to 128, you see that it disappears because of the terrain and vegetation. Next image is of 128 heading south. Very similarly, the development is seen in an aerial as we drop down towards 128. It is really completely shielded. We have an animation that we can show later.
Yeah. You have to.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, again. I'm Lynn Gyska, Principal and Co-Founder of Studio of 2112 Landscape Architecture. And we are very thrilled to be the landscape architects on this team. As Samir said, it's a dream project architecturally. This is a dream project from a sustainable environmental side and the landscape side. So we wanted to just start off with highlighting our connection to the monolith with the trustees of reservations. It's actually, we have a trailhead right in our site on the upper right-hand corner there, you'll see. This is something that's really special for us. Matt had mentioned earlier, we do have a dedicated parking area at the trailhead. That's part of the design for 16 spaces. Those can be accessed through the campus. And then there's some ongoing conversations that Mark is having with the trustees that figure out the proper ways to leverage this even further. So there's ongoing developing stories there. But it's something that's really special to the site and we feel like is a wonderful shared amenity. So taking a step back, we have shown a number of existing conditions here. We do like to do the before and after because it's pretty powerful when it comes to this site. But this is, you see 128 labeled there. You see the impacts of the project site. The Manchester Athletic Club is to the lower right. That is something that we're looking to screen from the project as well. And we see Brady, the industrial sites. But this starts to highlight the existing trailhead that comes through our site that's part of the monoliths. So that's our before picture. This is the restoration of the site. So it's been really important to, I mean, I'm sure you've all heard quite extensively tonight, not only the ecological restoration, but enhancement of what we can actually provide to this, to the quarry site. So you see how the buildings here span upper and lower levels. And then you see a whole lot of green, which is really the intent in various ways. So we'll get into that a little bit more. As we look back from the other direction, we have Brady on the right and Beaver Dam Road. We see Atwater Ave. But this one, I think, really gives a good sense. Most of the folks here have been on site. So I think you've been on the ground to really see what this is. But the kind of extents of the scarred area that we have to work with and a lot of the leftover industrial pieces there. So it's a beautiful blank slate for us to do some pretty powerful things with, which is what we're showing here. You start to see, see if I can do it here, maybe Matt, you can do it online. That's our trailhead parking. And so it's a really wonderful shared amenity between CST and the public for this portion. Okay. Samir introduced us very briefly to the site plan in the beginning and the master plan. I'll go through it again, high level, but we can carve into this a little bit more. I think I want to start with our main entry down on the lower left. And I can drive that, Matt, you got it. Thank you. So this is the main entry to the site. And as you come up, we have our visitor parking to the south. And this really provides that main entry access to the lobby in the Phase One building. As we move around the site, we have pedestrian access through the entire loop, which is a really important thing for the wellness side of the goals of the project. And then actually, if we go to the north side of the Phase Two garage, that's one space where we're working on having some community garden spaces that's used for the people who are working there. So I think it's a program they currently have. We're finding wonderful spaces to do that in the future. We do have a rainwater harvesting tank as part of our irrigation needs and establishment for the project. So that's built into this whole piece. And it's kind of tucked, we're not showing it on the surface because it's buried in the burn. But then as we move towards the west, we connect through the quarry garden at the lower portion of the project. So you'll start to see this a little bit more. Samir has highlighted this earlier. But this is the breakout space in the lower piece of the quarry. And then on the upper level, the upper quad, this really takes advantage of the views and connection. The views to the north and pulls out the lobby, Phase One and Phase Two buildings. Those all spill out onto that area. And the lobby itself is incredibly visually porous to connect the landscape on both sides. For time, I'll move on. Canopy loss and replacement. We did this analysis for the application. I think it is very important for all of us to remember, the quality of the plant material that's out there is not the highest. So what we're able to do in the darker green is highlight the vegetation that we're looking to remain. And we've worked painstakingly to do so. The areas in the brown and the lighter orange, those are areas that we will need to clear in order to produce the project. But in the light green, we see that we're really looking at a major improvement, not only canopy coverage, but in the quality of that plant material that we're looking to design now. So Matt mentioned, maybe Anthony mentioned too. I think this, the board has asked us to work with an ecologist. So we got in touch with Josh Wilson, who's a senior ecologist at Biohabitats. And we've been developing the plant palette and the means of restoration with him and Matt's team as well. What Josh did initially is he came out on site, provided us with an ecological assessment of existing conditions, everything that's out there, landscape typologies, what's there, what's not there, our soil depths and things. And so we used that to develop our landscape typologies in our proposed condition. So we have, and you'll see in the application, a very extensive plant palette and list that has been deadened through everyone saying, these are the appropriate things for these various typologies. So as we advance to CDs, we'll be pulling our plants from that. And so we're really looking to completely change what's happening there on site and bring it back to a beautiful restored condition. So this gives us a sense of moving through the New England grassland habitat to our main entry. So if I'm a visitor, I'm coming up this way. And this is our experience as we come up to the main lobby. So as Samir talked about, so this is a view of the entry plaza. I think the main lobby entry is to our left. And we look back over to the pergola on some outdoor dining on the south side of the site. But the materials that Samir was talking about in the building, those will really make its way into the landscape as well. So all of the granite that's on the face of the building becomes our ground plane. We're looking at salvaged boulders and then native boulders to not only provide some seating, but some breakup of spaces in the landscape. This is a view south. You can see the perosity of our main lobby. And so this quarry, the upper quad, is broken up into two different elevations. So we can provide really wonderful larger gatherings out there. But it still works on a day-to-day basis with some smaller gathering spaces, space for people to work outside and dine. So this is our major outcrop that's at the heart of the whole project. We've all painstakingly worked to design around this. So I think this is a really great one to kind of tell everyone and show the story of how we've really worked so hard to restore the landscape and then how this is a beautiful sculptural backdrop for so many activities on the site. So with that, Mark, are you closing? I think we're it, that's it.
Well, I guess I will take it from here, but there's not much left to be said. First of all, you inspired us to design the project this way. From the very beginning, we heard from the planning board that visibility from 128 was a major issue. We also heard an awful lot about drainage and sawmill brook. And so Matt has worked very hard to make sure that the quality of and quantity of runoff is a vast improvement. So thank you again for your input. I don't know that we would have gotten there as quickly without it, but we needed that kick, it was good. At this point, I don't anticipate discussing the specific requirements for the special permit or the site plan approval. We'll get into that as time goes by. But I think that there are probably people who are virtually attending who may have questions as well as the planning board.
Right, I wanted to emphasize to keep it at a high level for the public and for the boards as we go through this. So with that in mind, I'll just ask the board if they have any questions or comments on the presentation. It's quite good, by the way.
One question, is the tree going to stock sawmill brook with trout?
Well, there may be some still wild fish in that. Try to bring them back for the best.
Any other board?
Just a high-level question. This presentation was saying upwards of 500 employees. And there was a recent newspaper article that said 800. So I'm trying to get clarification of how many employees.
The 500 is the right number.
Is the cap?
Yes, 500.
And those would be coming from the Danvers office?
Well, over time, it would be a mix. I mean, initially, it would be primarily coming out of the Danvers site. But it would be a combination of employees that move from existing sites to new hires.
I had a question, I hope we shouldn't get into the weeds too much. But is the electric coming in underground or is that overhead? Is there any concern on these trees that are being planted because the substrate is rock that they would grow?
There's a lot of different conditions out there, and we're bringing in soils. So the soil number is a big one in the budget. But working with Biohabitats, we've appropriately said, here's our existing condition here so we can support it. We can get into that more, but yeah, it's a great question.
I was wondering if you could explain a little bit more about the Phase Two and how, how thing, you know, how long is that going to take to, you know, what's the schedule for that? Maybe you don't know. And what will it, will there be a resting period sort of between the two phases? Or is, do you know yet?
I can address that in part. The short answer is we don't know because it's really dependent upon business conditions. Obviously, Phase Two is part of our growth plan. And how rapidly we grow will in part depend on what the business needs are. I would say that there will definitely be a rest period in between of at minimum, I would say, two to three years. I would say the soonest we would have a Phase Two completed would be probably, say, five years after Phase One is completed. And that's probably the soonest. Because we want, might be, we just kind of live in it for two or three years and then plan from there in terms of Phase Two. But again, very dependent upon business.
All right. Questions from the town? I noticed the both chiefs are on, DPW and Mr. Res. Any questions or comments?
A few questions more about traffic and without getting into specific details. But you mentioned the Phase One traffic report. Kind of indicated some minor improvements to, but no wholesale changes. And that indicated perhaps Phase Two might require things, more significant offsite improvements.
Yeah, so the study that was done by TEC, who will be here from there on, the study basically came up with for Phase One, very minor improvements are needed. When we get done with Phase One, the intent is to re-study what's going on and then make a determination of that. Because as Craig said, this is a five to 10-year project that we're doing.
Yes.
Any questions from Western and Sampson? More concerns? No?
No, no, we're working on our completeness review. We've done this very broad site business, but we do need to schedule with the applicant an actual site visit. And then I guess just in terms of the order of topics, we're going to front load the site civil stormwater if that was acceptable to the board. Do that at the next hearing, or not, sorry, not the next hearing. Well, it's the first hearing, the technical elements are being reviewed. And then do traffic and then architecture, landscape architecture and additional bio compliance.
Yeah, I'd like to maybe discuss that after meeting.
Sure, sure.
Know that goes. Okay, any?
Sorry, one other question. More is just, I haven't gotten all the way through the packet, but I have skimmed it. Is there any going to be, any discussion about the off-site electric capacity issues or at some point during the technical review? Because there are Daymark study that Gloucester commissioned that talked about the electric capacity issues.
Peter? Do you want to address that?
I mean, it just, we don't have to talk about it now. I just wanted to make sure that we were, that it was going to be part of...
It's absolutely something that we can discuss at a future meeting. Gloucester has petitioned the PPU for intervenor status. I think they stepped back because of whole process going on with the grid modernization advisory commission. There's an awful lot going on. And the long and short of it is, the North Shore needs more electric power.
Okay, I do notice Greg has it. Go ahead.
Appreciate the holistic presentation tonight. A couple of things that I'll just be interested in are, you know, what happens to the site between Phase One and Phase Two? I would assume that it would be paused for a while. To what extent do you restore areas that you're not going to come back and disturb or leave things in maybe an interim kind of a state? So that would be interesting to know about. There are also some areas outside the limit of work that are, appear to me from sidewalks and from looking at satellite images, that are quite eroded and, you know, bare soils. There's a depression sort of outside of the site, more on the trustee side of things, that appear to be quite eroded and, you know, an impact from prior uses of the site. But if that is outside of the limit of work, how would you propose to mitigate that or repair that so that that erosion stops happening? Another question I had was on the visibility from Route 128. I can see that, you know, the way the architecture is nestled into the site, done a lot to address that already. I would be curious to think about nighttime views. That atrium is going to emit a lot of beautiful light. It's going to be quite lovely, but it will also perhaps be seen from 128, maybe in addition to some of the poles along the road. So understanding that better. And then also thinking about the leaf on versus leaf off period and those views. There are some areas where the existing vegetation on 128 within those kind of buffer zones is kind of thin down. And there are some, maybe call it sort of quasi-meadow area, that's outside, I think, the limit of what you're proposing to intensively rehabilitate. So, you know, is it worth looking at that for additional vegetation or, you know, topography or something that might address those? And then last question, again, we can get to all these things later. But in terms of the Biohabitats report, that was quite high level at this point. And so they were setting some goals and some principles. But it would be great at a future meeting to get to specifics about, you know, how, what are the key species that you're trying to, you know, to build up this habitat for? And what are the habitat needs and the kind of corridors and connections that they would require? I do want to say that I, you know, looking through it, I saw in the GCA report, there was one, I think, a very early study of kind of just, you know, development footprint on the site and buildings that were spread across the site would, could infer quite a lot more pavement to get to it. So I, what I really appreciate so far is the very compact footprint of the development. So I, what I really appreciate so far is the very compact footprint of the development and, you know, the limiting of the requirements for pavement, roads, vehicular traffic through the site, and really limiting the extent of their architectural footprint. So it makes sense to the, what you're thinking about, the mitigation and the ecological repair of the site. So I'll definitely be interested in that. Thank you.
Greg, you have your hand up.
Sure, thanks, Ron. I just, I didn't know if we can just have a quick overview of the access road and the ring road, the grades that are contemplated, sort of the general width and construction of that road.
Need that water app?
Probably off of that water app. So just taking it from the entrance way, sort of what the grades might be in different sections. Again, if I can get that perhaps at a later time if you don't want to get into that.
I can respond to that. Go ahead. So the max grid on anywhere, any point on the ring road is 10%. The majority of the areas that are not being parked on the ring road are 20-foot wide, two-way lanes. Anywhere that we get into a parked area, we bump up to 24 feet so that you can get in and out. And then as you go around the area, like the rear part of the garage, again, we're going back to 20 feet. And then when you get down into the utility area, that basically depends, there's some wide areas for tractor trailers to pull off so they can back into the utility areas. And then there's, but it's all two-way access. It's relatively flat on the low side, and it's relatively flat on the, sorry, it's relatively flat on the north side going across. There's a little bit of undulation, but it's not very steep. It's all very walkable. On the south side, it's relatively flat. There's a lot of ADA compliance that we have to deal with in that area for the parking. Really, the steep areas are where you're coming up the hill from Atwater Ave and then where you're going down behind the parking garage. That's where it gets to the...
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this point, I'll open it to the public. Has any comments or questions at a high level? Use the hand raise feature?
In the back.
Yes, in the back? Could you stand in the center?
Okay. Oh, in the center. My name is Karen Gates, and I live on School Street, Desmond, and so on. And I didn't come for this reason. I just happened to be here. I came from somewhere different, but I have something to say about this. I know Mr. Coons, I've never met him, because though you see three letters when they were applying, because it was probably a hearing that he might not approve, we do have to follow our family. So I don't know who he is. He's right here, Mr. Coons. Actually, I tried to call even your home, and nobody answered. And I tried to talk everybody down, nobody answered. But, you know, I'm glad to know you. So I don't know why the town in general, and a lot of people in town, don't agree with me. Why are we so concerned about how it is seen from 128 so much when it's going to be a structure of a business? It's not going to be a building with many apartments. A lot of people will not be living there. They will be there only during the day, and then they will be gone to their own homes. And I think from the early plans that they had, I saw a beautiful design, a southern architect. I, we've had architects in our life and our family. I think it's a wonderful structure. I know you're trying to do the best you can because I think especially if you're from the town, you won't try to hurt it. And I heard you saying all the planting that you were involved in this to make it, make everything fit within the environmental area there. And I think this is a good idea to put on this called the big highway so they hide more. And I think we should not really complain a lot about this project. It's going to be, well, we thought the town eventually will get together and agree to a lot of the things if they don't agree now because I think as you see, as it progresses with the plans and everything, you have our vote. And I know a lot of other people that I've talked to are okay with it. I know you have always people who don't agree with anything or ever, never agree. So anyway, good luck with it, and I hope you really do well with them.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Peters, Rob. You got it by yourself?
You calling me?
Yes.
I just wanted to say kudos.
Did you just give your name and address first?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Sylvia Friesenner at 52 Mascolomore Street. I wanted to say kudos to the team. This is fabulous, and I think this will enrich the town. And I'm just very impressed with that. And by the way, you need some deer to make it look really rustic.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Okay, have you heard the comments? Otherwise, I'll, oh, Ms. Hardy?
Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. But you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I wanted, I wanted to say that in the lead application process, I believe there are requirements to educate the public and have ways to talk about the building with the public. And so sometimes I'd love to hear what those plans are because that, because I want to be there, and it's just a great opportunity for bringing the town in for education and, you know, to be oriented. And I want to congratulate you too, all of you, everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like to continue this public hearing, at which time, I think our next meeting is April 8th. If I'm wrong, Mark.
Our next meeting is March 25th.
Sorry, the next...
Public hearing.
The next meeting on which I think peer review would be ready would be April 8th.
Okay.
Our next meeting is the 2050th, correct? So I'd like to continue the meeting, continue the public hearing to April 8th.
Is there a required motion?
Yes. It does?
Yes. Yes, it does.
So a little second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Ms. Tenney?
Yes.
Ms. Stroll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Chair, both, yes. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for your great presentation.
We look forward to working with you then.
Yes, sure. Are we going to get the review at that meeting or is it before the meeting?
Okay.
Weston Sampson's review.
So, yeah, I want to, yeah, we'll let you know. I want to discuss that with Mark and Weston Sampson.
The other Mark. It's more of a question of, are we, do you want us to respond to stuff that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I come up with a procedure on how we're, want to discuss that with...
Yeah, I mean, generally, if we can have the review comments beforehand, at least, even though you may not make adjustments or changes to the drawing, at least you can respond to the concerns at that time and then, you know, subsequently make changes that get checked and...
And we'll know which topics will be covered at that time.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we'll talk. But I think we'll probably do the general site design and civil engineering at the next meeting, and then probably traffic, and then the remaining items at the third meeting. And then we'll circle back depending upon how many questions and items come forward that need to be addressed in that subsequent meetings.
Just want to understand expectation.
Yes. And you have Matt's contact information if you need anything from him.
I'd be surprised.
It just would probably be a good idea to copy Mark on any communication.
Okay, thank you all for coming. Look forward to working here. Look throughout the summer.
Hopefully not.
No. No, that's all right.
Oh, did you tell me your name?
Oh, is that here?
I'm sorry, just, yeah.
The Charlotte one here?
Oh, my God.
Yes. Yeah. Oh, April 8th, yeah.
Sorry, I switched to City of Chelsea. Yeah, oh, yeah, we're working on it. We've done a lot for the city, for the nation, lots of environmental work. Is it the Broad West or...
Yeah.
Interesting. Nice to see you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have his name or... Yeah, the order. Yeah. Move on a little more time. Just have a little more time. I know it's priorities, traffic.
And then give it more time. Yeah, that makes sense.
If you want my cellphone and my email about this nice situation. Anyway.
I'll just want to be there. Yeah.
Yeah, it feels like this has been...
Right, thanks.
No, I pray all of them to be, uh, pretty technical.
Nice meeting you.
You just forgot to, you just took it. Yeah.
Should we finish up the meeting?
Yes.
I'm surprised we're made such progress. Who knows then? So driveway openings, mark it, we'll pass on that, too.
Yes, I mean, with public works, um, the driveway opening, bylaw, and applications at the last meeting, they have their own application that they're going to use. And so we marked it up, and then I'll make the final adjustments and send it out later this week.
Okay.
Liaison meetings, MBTA communities update?
Okay, so we had our zoning forum. Thank you all for just staying with that. We got really good feedback.
Great feedback, yeah.
It was a good thing, and want more of them. So we'll be doing that as well. The next meeting is with the planning board on the 25th. And we'll be hopefully presenting actually some pretty term ideas for what districts should be. There's going to be a couple of threshold questions for us to consider. One of them is, are we willing to consider overlay district in the LCD or not? Because no one knows that. By the way, the trade-off is if we do one in the LCD, every unit that gets the capacity that is currently going to be built. Whereas if we do it in the downtown, it's just going to be an additional. On the other hand, the more districts we put in the downtown puts more pressure on the downtown. So that's what we have to balance. I think there is one we can get to, but it's going to be something we as a planning should have to weigh in on very carefully. So 25th will be an interesting meeting, what we can afford to.
We're going to double up. We're going to have two for each one of the...
It's going to be online.
I'll be coming in. Oh, you'll be...
I'll be online.
Okay. Any questions for...
Yeah, will we get any data before the meeting to review?
Yes.
Well, what, I want to make sure what we know, what do you mean by data? What data?
So if you're proposing overlay districts?
Right.
I would assume you've already have the underlying data, which is how many units are currently in the district, how many are multifamily, lot sizes, all that kind of stuff, and then what the capacity would be, what's the delta between what's currently there versus what would be built if it was zoned.
Yeah, that's our intention, yes.
Once we identify the parameters, it is already available from what's on the website. You can easily figure out how many units, lot sizes, and multifamily. Obviously, you cannot figure out the delta for yourself without applying the law to it. So once we identify the parameters of the location, all that stuff is available on the town website. But we'll present that, too.
And then are we still on MBTA? I had some questions on, it looks like the town administrator wrote his latest blog on the MBTA, and it just seems differing data than what's been discussed prior. So I'm having some questions of where we're going with this. Do I have to take it up with him or...
You mean what the...
So the March 8th blog was about an MBTA question.
Oh, okay.
And there's just information in there that doesn't sync up to other stuff. And so I'm just questioning where the...
Is Greg, Greg, you have a comment?
Greg, I didn't write it.
Oh, Greg wrote it?
No, he didn't.
He didn't?
Oh.
Who wrote it?
Yeah, Harrison wrote it, actually.
So did she write it with the task force?
Yes, yeah.
So can I ask you guys or, you know?
Well, I'm not sure what data you're talking about, so could you be more specific?
So it says that one-third of the town is on sewer, and I checked the, again, the CWMP report, and I have a report that, sewer task force report, that has, we, half is on sewer and half is on septic. So one-third is incorrect.
Well, maybe area instead of number of households, I don't know. And I'm not sure...
Yeah, but you don't have, like, just empty land doesn't have sewer or septic.
Well, yeah, sure. If you have an empty lot and the sewer is out in the street, then yeah, that lot has sewer. I'm not sure that's what he meant, but...
Yeah, because then you'd say even less because it's a none of the, LCD has it then.
No.
But I mean, I, it would be a strange way to look at things if it was by land. But, and then it talks about if you had eight units, it would be an apartment block. I don't know what an apartment block is.
Apartment block is a, is a block of apartments. It's a building, a single building, the main apartment.
So are we looking at this as kind of like if you do six units, it's a six-unit block?
No.
No. We haven't, we haven't written the regulations for what the maximum size of the building is, how many units you can put in, design review requirements. So you're asking questions that we don't really have answers yet at the upcoming meetings.
I'm just saying, I'm just, because this was very confusing. It's, it's...
I haven't, I haven't read it, but just, yeah.
Because then it says if we extrapolate out like a 6,000-square-foot lot and we do what's more in character for Manchester, a three-family, that's better than on a bigger lot. But if you do that, then that equates to 21 units per acre if you take 6,000, you know. So I just, it was more confusing than, than helpful, and so I'm just wondering that.
It's more than...
I'm sorry.
I have also a comment on MBTA. I'd just like to, anybody watching the tape, tonight's tape, or on, listening online, I just want to make it clear that there was a meeting of a political action committee and make people understand that that is not the deciding body or the making, that that group is not making recommendations to the task force. And there was some confusing information presented there. So invite people to come to the task force meetings or to the planning board meeting and not be confused. The group did a good job of saying that it was a political action committee, very much opposed to the MBTA zoning, but the, but people should come to the task force and to the forums to get the correct information.
Thank you for the update. We'll have a fresh update next meeting.
So Ian wrote this, so I'll ask her.
Sure.
Okay, because, yeah, it doesn't make...
The, the group did a good job of saying that it was a political action committee, very much opposed to the MBTA zoning, but the, but people should come to the task force and to the, to the forums to get the correct information.
Okay. Thank you for the update. We'll have a fresh update next meeting.
So Ian wrote this, so I'll, I'll ask her.
Sure.
Okay, because, yeah, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Any update on the harbor?
Yes.
Harbor update.
There'll be a forum on March 19th at 7:00 at the high school. There will be, the purpose of the forum is to get input on people's interests and concerns about the harbor, broadly speaking, the coastline, really. Recreational boating, water quality concerns, public access issues and opportunities, ideas that people have, safe boating, you know, both winter and summer. And there'll be a series of, it's a very short presentation, but tables where people can go on around and give their comments. So it's scheduled from 7:00 to 8:30, I would think, the active time. You know, people can drop in and give their comments and leave. There'll be quite a bit of a push on social media and.
Will it be virtual, Sarah, or just in person?
Uh, it will be just in person.
Okay.
There'll be other opportunities for people to give input, but it's a, you know, a great opportunity. It's been largely organized by the consultant Urban Harbors, who has done this, a number of other communities. And the flyer has a link to their website, so you can see what harbor management plans look like. I can actually send you all the flyer as well, and please feel free to come or distribute it.
There's a question on that. So, so Urban Harbors did Gloucester's Harbor overlay. And it's kind of like the MBTA in the sense that it then becomes a state overlay district. Is that what's looking to be done for Manchester?
Not necessarily. We're not that far along. It could, there could be proposed zoning overlay districts if there's a certain use that is consistent with the harbor protection or water-related uses. But that's not necess, we're not that far along yet to know what the needs are. But if the plan is, has state involvement as a process, if, if CZM is involved, then it can become the basis for zoning overlays. But we're not anywhere near that yet.
Okay, yeah, I know, because I, I mean, I just know that, yeah, there's issues with that, as with, you know, anything really, but, because then it takes local control out.
Well, I don't think that's the intent.
Okay, thank you. GPC is sleeping until after town meeting. Done our work, so I have nothing to report. Any other committees or comments from everyone? We have regular minute, meeting minutes, 212 and 226. I think Gail has posted them to our site. Does anyone have any?
I see somebody saying, I, I missed those. And, oh, I missed them, I'm sorry.
I think they were there.
No, they're not, they're not there.
Oh, they're not?
Sorry. No.
Okay, so no meeting minutes to approve. I left this to the end. Any public comment to the board on any items that's not on the agenda?
This is Jay Blackett with Hancock Associates. I just had a quick question going back to 19 Smith Point Road. We had discussed the second driveway being included in the special permit. Was that included, decided to be?
No, I think you have to file that separately.
Yeah.
Driveway opening, and that will come to the board, as it's a double driveway. So I would contact Gail or Mark, how to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't, we had no plans, so I didn't want.
Can I make a comment?
Yes, please identify yourself.
Katerina Gates, School Street and Desmond. He said for something that was not discussed, which is something, I have a question. Two properties, just out of our four sides, our main street and two our properties, two neighbors' properties were sold about a month apart from each other. So they all are going to be not only changing owners, but also the terrain is going to be changed from what it looks from both of them. We received in, sometime after the holidays, a paper announcing that it was going to be a certain dwelling there, and it was applications with conservation and conservation. When we went there, it was already approved, because the file did the 18th of December, just for Christmas, within five days, they could put in the paper, and then had only five days to go. We were not around. We were in Boston, we had hospital things and so on, so we couldn't say anything, we didn't even know. And so we have nothing against changing, you know, homes, restoring them, you know, adding and so on. But we live in an area that is so dense. And the plan, we went to the conservation when I came back, and I got all the copies that they had to work with, to give it permission. So, in a, so they were expanding that two-story building, actually three-story, and instead of making, it was two apartments, every floor had one apartment. And I think they might be making it the same way, or separating two dwellings, build a new dwelling, and leave the old one as one and another, leaving a dwelling, plus garages. They say they will have a garage built, if they take a certain space from the property that was not a building on it. So it seems that they are digging now a lot more than they applied for. And I'm wondering, why do we do in a case that we're, you don't want to complain to neighbors that they're getting a structure?
They would apply for a building permit.
Yes.
And then the building inspector would, would tell them what zoning laws apply, and.
So do they let anybody know about this, or they just go ahead and?
No, they have to, to build, you need a building permit.
We didn't receive anything ourselves as abotters. They sent us all the record. We have a record of all the abotters at the 300 feet from the premises. They sent abotters notification.
So what's your concern?
A lot of people don't care who don't live next door. You know, if I'm not next door to your house, and somebody builds in front of your house, it's your duty to go and maybe say something about it, because I would not go and complain about someone who agrees to have it next to the neighbor. But when I see downtown, every tree on every property disappearing, just because they're building a driveway, or because they're adding a house that is taking the whole lot, I know these people who purchased it already put a sign for sale, and the building is not even there. They're selling every property for $1,250,000. So it's not really that they bought it to live there, to beautify the area, they just bought it to make money. And they're hearing about this new law that is coming up, about more dense areas built everywhere. And I wonder, how could we do this without having proper rules yet established? And these people are taking most of the area. I thought we weren't, years ago, I wanted to expand our property towards the garden side, and my husband said, no, you cannot have. 40% has to be left as property, open to, you know, the, the lot. So these people are taking more, I think, than what they applied for. They applied for a garage, and now they're putting in other structures.
Well, it's an enforcement issue. I don't think it's a planning board issue.
No, I'm just asking.
We need to have a building inspector get a call, and if there's something that's out of, in, not in cooperation with the zoning bylaw, it needs to be addressed.
Because they, then there is the parking, the parking.
You know, we can. We don't have that power.
I know, I know. I'm just bringing it up as a subject that goes on. And parking there is so needed, because every house has more than a car, and they park in front of our home, because we have a long frontage. Now, there are more, two, two big dwellings and two-car garages, I'm sure they will need more parking. So where are these people are going to park if they don't leave enough space for parking?
Parking minimums in the zoning bylaw. Anyway, thank you.
That's, that's, you know, it's just a general thing, not, not, I didn't bring it as my issue, but a general thing, especially downtown, when we are like this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Anything else? Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Anybody against adjourned? I have a good one. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.